Yes, okay. So we'll call the Acton School Committee meeting to order on Thursday, March 14th, 2024 at 5:00, and we'll begin with the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
No adjustments.
No adjustments tonight, okay. Any comments from the public? No comments, okay. Then we'll move on to number three, progress monitoring with teacher certification with Rachel.
Good evening, everybody. I've been the support team chairperson this year, and the support team is made up of myself, Jennifer Goodwin, and Chad DePrisco. And it, I'm not sure who it occurred to first, but it occurred to somebody on our team to check out the status of our teacher certification handbook, which is shared with everybody, obviously. It was last updated in 2009, 2010. Patty worked on it back then. I really was, I'm gonna admit, my first thorough reading of it for a long time, we were hugely out of compliance in quite a few areas, especially in the area of recertifying a professional certificate, which is every five years. The state had done quite a bit of work and had changed things. So the three of us, Jen, Chad, and myself, met over a few months. We went through the entire handbook, and what you have is the updated work that we did. I met with John, we went through it together, seemed to make sense to both of us at that point. It really, so the support team is responsible for the mentoring system, for one thing, for brand-new teachers. The team is responsible to make sure that there are trained mentors, and our mentors are trained through the Department of Education. And right now, we have, I believe, at least six teachers in the building who've been trained by the DOE in mentorship. We kind of brought, I won't take you through the whole thing, but we brought the whole mentor program back up to speed, to align with what the state would like. The biggest changes, and that's the only thing I would actually direct you to, I think we have page seven, explains the process for a professional certificate to be recertified in that fifth year. And the teacher prepares the material and the sort of the documentation, the proof of what they did, presents it to the support team, who then makes the recommendation to recertify, hopefully. The support team chair has a portal to the DOE and then just submits that, that, we gave a thumbs up. But about three-quarters of the page down, it says that in order for a support, a staff member supported by this plan to renew a professional certificate, he or she must, the teachers now have three options to recertify. The first is pretty straightforward, if they take two college courses, that would take care of it. The second choice could be one course and then 45 hours of documented in-service training. The last is 90 hours of in-service training, designed to improve the performance of the teacher in the field during the term of the certificate. That's the biggest change. Prior to this, we had a menu, almost a page long, of lots of different options for how the teacher could put those 90 hours together. And the DOE really wanted us to shift more toward clear hours spent trying to improve a teacher's job, their performance. So we met with the teachers at an early release day, explained everything. The other big change is that we'll get, we're going to give the teachers a few years of sort of a grandfathering period, because a lot of people are due next year, and they would not have had, you know, this change planned. Do you have questions? Yes?
So when we do the hour, you know, on a early release day, is that considered in-service training?
Yes.
So they could apply, can they go back?
Go. They can.
So that would be one hour each week.
And it, over a five-year period, that adds up.
Right. So now, they don't just send their classes, they just don't send them into the state? They send them into the state?
They, yeah, they, uh, teachers with a professional certificate have never had to send in any hours, like directly to the state. When you first apply for your certification, the state needs to see what classes you've taken, they need your transcript, things like that. Once you're certified in your, in that five-year rotation, it's the, in every school district, it's the support team that kind of vets that process.
This was a lot of work.
Yeah, thank you for doing this. You and the team.
You're welcome, and Jen and Chad were so patient. They met every morning, or many mornings. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the work due to Jen and Chad absentee. All right, let's move on to number four, and I will look for a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll second.
I'm going to second by CJ. Any discussion? All in favor? Happy now. Okay, we'll move on to number five, and we'll have the superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you, I have a few things. Excuse me, you mean notice this lot of parents in the building this evening, last night and tonight, a parent-teacher conferences. A big thank you, shout-out to the PTG for supplying us with pizza tonight and snacks last night, that's awesome for the long days. Welcome back to Sharon, Sharon's with us, very nice to see Sharon again back with us, and Sharon's been tethered to us for the last month or so getting the job done, but we have her in person tonight, and that's awesome. Just want to do, just a quick, you know, for those of you, we all lived it, everybody over here, and some of you, the great job on the budget, I mean, that was a lot of work. Really, the camaraderie with the warrant finance and the school committee's really nice, I mean, they're really nice meetings to go to. For budget, something kind of dry, like a budget numbers, I think we make it as fun as we can, and I think it was a lot of work, and now it's up to the voters. Then, we'll touch base a little bit on that later in the agenda. PD Day tomorrow for, for staff here, so no school for kids pre-K through 8, but Sanford High School is in session tomorrow for Acton kids, okay? So Sanford High School does their PD Day in, in October, and we do ours in March, so we're just swapping that out. The girls volleyball, first game is tonight away at Noble, so that's where our girls are.
That's where the bus was.
That's where the bus is going, yeah, that's where they are, so hopefully they'll do a nice job, they've been practicing every night except Wednesdays in here, and I've been kind of watching that, and Sam's doing a great job with them, and I seem very excited. We have 14 kids?
Fifteen.
Fifteen kids.
That's great, I was gonna ask for many, that's awesome.
So that's where they are right now, I just wanted, I couldn't help but comment on the weather, I mean, I gotta say something about the fact that this winter was about six weeks long, it was the winter that wasn't, and the teachers were like, what about those snow days that you were supposed to have?
Well, we start on the weekend.
I'm pretty sure we're gonna end on a Monday half-day, there's not a lot I can do about that, unless if something weird were to happen in March, and we've seen snow in April here, so. You never know, but right now, our last day was, was a Monday, and it's still a Monday, because we haven't even used a remote snow day yet. I think we had two delays, maybe, maybe three, I don't even know, but we haven't canceled school yet, so. Might you get anything?
Can you go back to the PD Day? I just want to know what vector training is?
Sure, do you want to grab that one?
Yes, those are trainings that the teacher, well, staff actually, that is kind of mandated by main school management, and helps, it also gives us a discount on our insurance if they take these trainings, but some of them are mandated to have to take every year. Jackie did a really good job this year, really researching every, every teacher maintenance to know exactly what they need to do, and everybody will be caught up in, in, yeah. Some, some only have a few, but some have quite a few, so John allowed some time tomorrow to be able to do those.
And I wanted to, wanted, you know, Paula to answer that, because she's mentored Jackie, and they've done a great job, like Jackie literally had to look at each employee, what the state statute was and what the insurance reasons are we need to, and then everybody has an individual plan. So if you're a new hire, you got a lot to do, if you've been around for a while, not so much, yeah, she did a nice job with that. Are there any other questions for me, because I do have a comment, I want to conclude my
I had one comment, the public forum, I think is on the 26th, not the 28th.
Right.
We changed it from Thursday to Tuesday.
Twenty-sixth, it's Tuesday.
Oh, we went from Thursday back to a Tuesday, noted.
Because Thursday was Monty Thursday?
Yeah.
Correct.
So we changed it to Tuesday.
I guess I had this Monday, Tuesday, and there is no Monday, Tuesday, it's my fault, okay?
It's Monday, Tuesday.
Yeah, I got you, okay.
So, yeah, the 26th.
Twenty-sixth, change to 26th, noted.
That's it.
Okay, I think I forgot, I know I forgot something, Rachel, what was it?
You might actually want to let them know that I am retiring.
See, Rachel was here tonight, it worked out perfectly that we announced retirement, right? And she's here anyway, so I thought, why did our day?
I was in my room, like, I honestly, I could have asked you, I think you could have helped me, but I'm counting that, this is my 36th year.
You all know Rachel, and she, you got her letter in, and she's retiring.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you, it has been, I have to watch it. A privilege to be here, and an honor, and, yeah, it's, it's a job that you learn to love, and it's hard to walk away from, but.
So many kids, it's so much better for having you here, Rachel.
Absolutely.
If I, I know Jen has the yearbooks, before I'm done, I am gonna take a yearbook, what, because, yeah.
Awesome.
A lot of faces.
Well, you don't have to leave.
No one's making me come.
I already tried that one.
Well, we'll, we'll let you leave for your, for your own welfare, and for your own pleasure, and to enjoy some.
Thank you, my husband's been a retired truck driver, I'm trying to think how long ago, at this point, about six years, and he's making it look fun, so I.
Well, I hope you have the time to do all the things you want to do.
Thank you very much, thanks, it's.
And thank you so much for all you've given to the school, I know some of the reading things that you've done, and some of the outdoor activities, and the extra little, not just in the classroom, but the extra things that you've done with the kids have been so much appreciated and noticed, and, and will be.
Thank you.
Will be very well remembered.
Thank you, September is gonna be very weird, when I watch those buses go by my house, it's gonna be, it'll be different.
Bittersweet.
Yes, for sure, thank you.
As Rachel's always got, the great spirit is like, sure, I'd love to do that, she'll be part of the yearbook, because she's the retiring teacher for the yearbook, but she's also gonna speak at graduation, which is our tradition, if she chooses to, and she chose to, so that's plausible, we're gonna hear more from her then.
I have a lot to say.
Finally.
A very brief span of time.
Okay, that, that concludes it, I talked to Rachel about this stuff, thank you.
Okay, so anybody have any other questions for any of the other administrators, administrative reports? So did you actually get to ski?
We did, we, we did, that fifth-grade ski trip was a blast, and I'm glad we got it in, because it was a rainy day, but it didn't pour until the boss was ready to go, which was perfect. It was a wet day, but mostly in the air, didn't really rain, and the snow was pretty soggy, but it was super neat, and it was, it was a little special, because we have a student in the fifth grade who also is, is in a wheelchair, and he was ahead of the class. We had, a big shout-out to Granite State Adaptive Sports, they're awesome, man-and-wife team came and worked with our student, and that kid got more runs than any other kid, because off he went, you know, it was, it was very special. Thanks for asking.
And I noticed that we've been having a lot of fun here with Spirit Week.
Yeah, there's a lot going on, look at some of the doors when you walk around the building, too, yeah.
Do we know who won the door contest?
I don't think it's been, yeah, it's not, not ready yet.
There was some heated competition.
The specialists actually did the judging today.
So you can't say anything, because you're on television.
For looks is sealed. All right, are we ready to move on then? Let's move on to committee reports, number six. Policy Committee has a few things for us to look at tonight.
Yep, we had kind of a lot.
Yeah.
This month, but then we're done for the year, or for the fiscal year. So, now I need to remember.
Lots of change.
Lots of words.
So we had a couple, there were three pieces related to the eighth-grade graduation trip, and they all kind of said the same thing, and one was kind of a permission slip, but kind of also not a permission slip, that hadn't been sent out in a number of years anyway, at least a number of years. So we are recommending to remove that one, and remove one of the other ones, and so just keep one that has everything that the other ones said. So we're trying to streamline where we can. Then the inter-scholastic sports, just a couple of very small, oh, a couple of small ones on the front and then the back, is updated, that third-to-last paragraph, about what the stipend committee, the makeup of the stipend committee, and that's, like it.
It's contractual, it's written out who needs to be on that, and we added that language.
And that's, that's, because I've done this for a number of years, so that's who we've always had.
Correct.
So, that's good to get that updated.
Yeah.
And then the after-school sports and activities rules, just kind of updates exactly when a student can, or can or can't participate in after-school activities if they get in trouble. And then the reintegration of students from juvenile correctional facilities, mostly just small updates. I don't remember what that was changed from in the second paragraph.
Looks like maybe it was just added in.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that was part of another one that we discontinued, so, that we've added in.
Oh, so you took stuff from one that was discontinued to merge it together?
So the page two of the JLDBG.
Yep.
There's F, section F.
Yep.
And it's, do we still have the learning results, is that still a thing in Maine?
Well, the standards are actually, the standards are actually.
Multi-tiered system.
Still, the learning results, and standards are the same, correct?
You know, assess progress toward meeting the content standard, you know, because if there's really no learning results, there's no reason to keep.
What are they called at the state level?
Multi-tiered system, I don't think they refer anymore to the learning results from that back.
Common Core standards.
Right.
So this is a first reading, so I would just look that up and change the learning results to.
Common Core standards.
Whatever is current.
Perhaps.
So this, and is this the, this is the reintegration of students, Mary?
Yeah.
So it's really, it's not, it wouldn't take a second reading, because it's a revision? So you could, what I would recommend is you pass this with the, right, with the recommendation to make a revision, and Jen has the notes, and we'll make those revisions.
Okay.
Okay?
Common Core standards, is that what it is?
Towards meeting the content standards of.
Common Core standards.
Just the com, meeting the common core standards?
Yeah.
If you say content, it's any standards, in case if the standards change from Maine Common Core.
Just the con, just the content standards?
I think that's what I heard Mary say earlier, yeah, that was, that'd be my recommendation.
What would it be?
Content.
Content standards.
Then cross off.
Not common content, just content standards.
Yeah, meaning the content standards, period.
Core content. Core content.
Just content.
Just content standards.
Just take off of the learning results.
Perfect.
Oh, that's a good catch.
The sentence right after that starts with the principal may require, but all of your other ones are superintendent, principal, designate.
Thank you, we usually catch those, yeah.
Jen, I assume you got both of those, yeah, they're, they're small things, but we'll change them.
And, and actually, down on I, superintendent, designate, but.
I think we said that one was okay, because the superintendent is.
Is that the duty?
Yeah.
The duty of just a superintendent?
Right, yeah, okay.
Designate, yeah.
Designate to be anybody, yeah.
Yeah, I was just looking at the consistency of all of that saying, all three, to make sure.
And then bullying really is just a couple of small updates.
They had cyberbullying.
Added cyberbullying, but we have a separate cyberbullying, that's in a different policy. And we added gender identity at the bottom of page one. And then we had to, for first reads, we have three forms or other kind of subsidiary paperwork that goes along with the bullying policy that the state recommended we add.
We never had it?
We did not.
We didn't really have a form.
There was a form of some sort, but it didn't.
There is, there are always, but these, these were recommended and updated by main school management, and like I said, they're addition to, they're just, they're really good forms, correct to use.
R2, I don't think I have R3 in mind, but that's okay. JICKR3?
Going back to.
Don't have that one.
R1.
Yeah, it looks like we didn't get.
We didn't get R3.
We got.
There are three, because it says page two or two.
It looks like we got an extra JLDBG instead of R3.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have R3.
Didn't go out with the packet, do you want to table that till next month?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can move on all of them, and then move that as a first read in April, and then we can, you can do a second read on the others, and a first read on that one in April, but we'll want to include it for the April packet, please.
Sure.
Is there any way to sneak a date on that at the bottom, just so we know when we did it, you know, because when you reference it, you could go, oh, we did that 10 years ago?
Yeah, so it's gonna be added.
When it gets adopted.
So when it gets adopted, so these, April, these JICKR1 and R2.
We don't have it yet.
Are gonna have, adopted, April, whatever, 2024, at the bottom.
Yeah, don't have the page yet.
No, it's brand, it's brand new.
Yeah.
And see, on these others, it's March 14th, and we have revised, oh, those dates, right.
Going back to JICK, JICK, what Amanda had brought out, just to keep it consistent, no, that's not the one, the one before that, what was it?
The correctional facility, JLDBG.
There was just one place where it was different from every other place, and I think it's probably, to keep it consistent, that change would be good.
Instead of saying designate?
Yeah, say.
In I?
Superintendent, principal, designate.
For I, down at the bottom?
For I, yeah, because it says, all the others say superintendent, principal, designate, so I think we should insert that in there.
Yeah, this was a lot of work for the Policy Committee, we took on a lot last Monday, I think it was, right, wasn't this, yes?
It was last Monday.
Week ago.
Yeah, thank you for all the work you did on these.
The other one, just a note, Judy's chair, you could group your revised together, but they're not in order, your top one's a revision, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
You noticed that?
So I'll look for a motion to accept IICA eighth-grade graduation trip, IGDJ inter-scholastic sports, IDJ, IGDJR, after-school sports, JLDBG, reintegration of schools from juvenile correctional facilities, JICK bullying, and.
And that's it.
As, as updated as of this date.
So moved, seconded?
All in favor? Now I'll look for a motion to delete policy number IICA eighth-grade graduation trip eligibility requirements.
And? And IICAR.
There was another one?
The one just after that one.
613 on the agenda?
Oh, IICAR.
Yeah.
Yeah, IICAR as well.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
And then in April, we'll find page three.
And right now, you can take a look at, you can take a look at JICKR1 bullying report form to be adopted as a first read, and JICKR2, summary of disciplinary and remedial actions, first read, I'll look for a motion to accept those as a first read as a second.
Second.
All in favor? And we'll leave R3 until our people leave. Okay. Good job, policy people.
Thank you.
These are headache jobs, I know, than I have been on that committee. All right, let's move on to 62, long-range planning, do you have anything?
We did not.
Throw out to the long-range planning committee, I recommend we meet in April, at our April meeting before, I think it was probably, it'll be after the budget vote, and, and long-range may want to look at some of our upgrades for our technology, the hardware and software pieces that we need to look at, does that sound okay?
Yeah.
All right, we'll make that the agenda item, then.
Okay, moving on to new business, and I'll turn that over to you, number 71.
Yes, you bet. I had a meeting this week, it was just yesterday, with a small group of people, pretty much working through the PTG, PTG members, and a couple interested other party members of, I got some notes here, I was kind of, you know, the purpose of our meeting was to brainstorm additional ways to increase attendance for Acton residents to come out and support the school budget over the course of the next three weeks, because we really have about three weeks, and it's been, you know, we've had a lot of responses that a Saturday meeting, a Saturday town meeting with several articles, or things to talk about prior to the school, school starts on page 23, and having a couple of ordinances, mooring, and I think planning, something to do with that, that has to be in front of it, along with the additional business that happens at the beginning of every meeting, that we don't know if it's gonna be an hour, an hour and a half before the school, we don't know when we're gonna get to the school. So knowing that it's kind of a moving target, knowing it's an all-day affair in the gym, really, we're like, how are we gonna get the parents there? So this group is gonna do the best it can and kind of get out the vote to try to get as many parents here as possible. We have a bunch of different brainstorming ideas, the PTG's gonna follow up on all of those, one of them that's kind of interesting, too, is there's gonna be lunch served here, but we also thought, what about a local food truck or something for breakfast out front? Make it welcoming, try to make it fun, hopefully it'll be a nice enough day so we could do something outside. We already have the childcare in place, which is great with, with Bridget Whitman, but I think we really need to figure out how to get as many parents as possible here, because we don't have that night meeting where it's just for the school, it's combined, so it's a little tricky, and they're a great group of people, so I'll keep you updated on where that goes, Judy's part of the group, you have all the information moving forward, and we'll just update you as you see things that go out, it'll go out most likely through PTG, it'll be their voice saying, hey, what can we do here, and we're looking at, you know, social media and other ways of getting people's attention to, you know, mention just how important this meeting is, so hopefully.
Our informational meeting will begin the reporter this week and also next week, encouraging people to come, hopefully, people if they have any real questions about the school budget, so we can explain particularly about. Hopefully, people, if they have any real questions about the school budget, so we can explain, particularly about the transfers and anything. Any questions they might have about any of the articles in the, in the warrant, we'll have the budget books by then to pass out for them and so, and they'll be available before that too, but we'll be sure to have some available that night for them to look at as we go through it. And hopefully have warrant articles also available that night for them to actually look at, so they'll know when they're, when they're looking at the warrant articles, they can compare with the budget book what they're actually voting for. So hopefully, and we've put a couple of explanations in the budget book too, that would be helpful, I think, for people to understand what we're looking for, so.
So I'll have the website updated with the budget, the current budget. Paula did a great job of pulling that together, Judy wrote her a wonderful letter, so I think we're in good shape there. Where would you recommend we take hard copies and how many, so central office knows what to do? Like, what do we typically do? Do we give you some, Jeanette, and you get them around town?
Well, I bring them to the Milton Mills Post Office, the post office, Town Hall.
Yeah.
Local one, Seri, they'll take them, then there's the barber shop there, forget what the name of that, that lady lives in Acton.
Yeah, Four Seasons.
And maybe at the quilting place, because those people go there from Acton.
You want to give Paula a number you think you might need, and then we can get that done?
I have a bunch ready, I totally, yeah, I have them ready.
Yeah, I'm ready, okay.
The thing, this, this really, I mean, this, the Acton Town Hall is the only place the reporter goes in town. See, that's the other thing, you know, I don't think they leave them at the trade, oh, and I'll leave some at the trading post if they'll take them. I don't know, they don't always do that anymore, but I'm going to, I'll do it, start tomorrow, is that too early? No.
I also put it on Facebook, the same advertisement that I put on Facebook, and I'll do a reminder.
Yeah.
You know, we could too remind people about it too, so.
The due date for the book was tomorrow, according to our conversations, but I, I'm hearing we're done, I've looked at it a couple times, so, yeah, we could start distributing.
I actually found just a small thing, there's actually two first grade teachers for this year, and it says that there's one.
For this given year?
That was in October of last year, we hired the first grade teacher August, so that, that was an estimated in October of that year. So I just kept it what we had the year before. But you're right.
Okay. Okay.
I didn't know that one.
All right, then we'll, we'll start getting those out the door tomorrow.
Excellent.
All right, and, oh yeah, back to you.
Seven two.
Back to me.
Back to you.
Back to me. That does fall back. Just a quick update on the hiring committee, and maybe some decisions can be made, or you can give me some guidance, school committee. So we have 10 candidates, we went out and did another ad to bring it back up to the top, you know, so if you resubmit your ad, and it closes tomorrow, end of business day tomorrow, since we reposted, we got two or three in. I looked today, there's, there's 10, so we're good, we might get another one or two by tomorrow. The way the policy reads is, you can have a selection committee looking at the materials to say, here's who we want to interview, and of course you have a hiring committee, the hiring committee and the selection committee can be the same thing, that's up to you. I do have 13 staff members interested, and the staff members include, you know, teachers, support staff, and administrators. So I have more than enough people, and also within that group of people who raised their hand and said, I'd be happy to be on a committee, I have every cohort represented too.
Okay.
So I'm just looking for some guidance from you, if a subgroup of you wants to look at the list of people interested and help pick those, great. If you want to give me the opportunity just to go to people tomorrow, because it's the PD day and everything's lined up, there'll be some free time, and I can say, hey, your name's on the list, do you want to represent three through five, or something like that? I'm happy to do that, because I know where everybody works in the cohort model, make sure we have support staff and administration at the table too. I'm happy to do that, or a couple of you can meet with me and look at the list of people and make some decisions that way. It depends on how much input you want on what that looks like.
How many people can plan on being in that group? I mean, it can't be a whole...
Well, there's two school committee members already, Judy and Amanda.
I know, but other than that, I mean, you can't have this large group of...
Right, so I can answer your question, if you did, one from each cohort, there's four, and then you two is six, and me, we're at seven.
Yeah.
You're probably going to look at somewhere around 10 anyway, is my guess, I'm guessing.
That would be plenty.
And to provide more input from the people that are interested, we could do a selection process and a, a group that hires, or, and some people might do both. Like, I could imagine, I do both, you do both, but somebody might be like, yeah, I'm okay with looking at resumes, but that date you picked isn't going to work for me, so I can't be at the interview, because we'll have to pick a date too, but I think we need to do that after we do a selection process. Timing's perfect, we can have interviews prior to probably our next meeting. Interviews, I'm not suggesting we may have a candidate for that, but we could probably get interviews done in the next four weeks, I would hope.
And others could submit questions, you know, that you could do.
So talk about it, let me know.
Do you have a parent representative?
What's that?
Do you have a parent representative?
I don't, and it wasn't part of the you must have. It doesn't say exactly, like, this particular policy talks about a committee that will be established to select, and a committee that'll be established to hire, but it doesn't say shall have a student, shall have two school board members, you know, it's not that refined. So that's why I'm throwing it to you to say, what do you want? It's, it's your hiring committee, it's up to you guys. I'm happy to be, do the footwork for you, but yeah, I just look for some guidance from you.
Well, if you have, you have the list, you have the list of people that have signed up, shown an interest, right, from each cohort?
Well, in general, and I know which cohort they work for, so I can just put in parentheses which cohort they're from, so you know what you got for representation.
Right. So if tomorrow is a workshop day, then...
I could go visit people.
Why wouldn't you visit people tomorrow and...
I can't, do you, do you want me to do that, was my question, or do you want to be involved with who's on the committee and say, this teacher, this teacher, this head tech, this administrator? I'm happy to do it, or you can have some input on that?
I don't think we've ever done that.
Okay, I don't know, because I've never hired a principal since I've been with you, so I'm kind of feeling my way through this, right?
I've been, I mean, I don't think we ever did that.
Okay, okay.
Yep.
Anybody else?
There'll be a question mark over your head, so I'll, I'll move on it, it's not a vote, it's just more of a, give me direction.
No, it was mostly the parent input.
We didn't have one, I had a parent.
We had one for the superintendent.
Yeah.
We did?
A parent, we had a parent for the superintendent.
Try to think who it was.
But anyway, it's just, you know, it's a different perspective, that's the thing, instead of just all personnel.
I can volunteer to be the parent, if you do.
All right, I accept you.
So do you want me to look for a parent?
We got a parent.
Okay, so then I'm just asking you again, I don't want to, I don't want to drive, I don't want to drive what the hiring committee looks like. I'll be, I'm obviously going to be part of it, so you want a parent on it, you just had to volunteer?
Sure, why not?
Okay. All right, and then as far as staff goes, tomorrow, I'll walk around, talk to some people about what level of interest they have on selection or hiring, because we don't want 13 of these people to sign up, it's just not enough room.
Yeah.
And it's redundant, I have a couple of people from each group.
No, you can't.
We don't need that many.
Okay, very good.
But, no, the other thing is, is just when you, you said you had 10, but there's usually a little investigative work to see they're out there somewhere. But if you're saying there are 10 good ones to look at and let the whole committee look, before, if we had gotten 10, we might whittle it down to seven. You know what I mean? You know, because you look at their resume.
You're not going to do 10, yeah.
No, we're not going to do 10, sure.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying, I can help a ton with that.
But the committee can look at, you know, all the, all of them, and then whittle away and get it down to seven or six, you know?
The hiring committee will probably see between four and five, right, that's what you're saying. And that's what the selection committee's job is, to kind of sift through them.
Yes, yes.
Because there's huge differences in, I mean, the candidates, I won't get into it now, but, you know, because it's a hiring process, but there's people who have, who are brand new to education, there's people who've been around for a while, so that's, that's one thing you got to look at. And then there's a rumor for the selection committee on who gets points for what they got for experience and those kinds of things, so. It'll be handled correctly, the question is who's going to be on the committees, and I think we're closer to that, so. My weekly updates to you, I'll probably, next Friday, I'll be able to tell you who it is. We'll probably have that locked away, and we'll probably work on some dates for Amanda and Judy to lock in for hiring, because we have to get those dates locked in, so that if it's during the, you know, school day, we'll get subs and whatnot here at the school, so that the group can meet in the conference room. All right, very good, okay, I appreciate that.
I'm just glad we got people interested.
Yeah.
10 people.
Did you end up doing Indeed, or what'd you do?
I did Indeed and serving schools.
All right, then let's move on to old business and the athletic job description.
I handed out hard copies of that, and I also can make any changes right now if you want to adopt it tonight, because I have the, I have it up.
We were chatting before the meeting, and I think we are agreed that we would like all after schools to be two words, after school, and no hyphens, and I think after that, we're good.
This is a pronunciation, love.
One, two, three. So... Or it says job goal.
Yeah, they're all...
No, the first bullet and the second bullet.
Three.
And...
Four.
Do you want input on this?
In the bullets, there's three of them, I believe.
This one out last month, Liz.
Okay, so there's one, two, three, four.
After, they have school, put there, and over here.
I found four.
I found four.
Yep.
I found four as well.
I got two, where are your other ones?
So job goal.
Under job goal.
This one, got it?
First bullet.
Second bullet.
Oh, just in second.
And then one, two, three, four, five, six bullet.
Three from the bottom, yeah. Got it. Okay.
That isn't a major change, that we have to do this all over again.
Do you like all inclusive?
I'll, yeah.
I like all inclusive, that's, yeah, I like all inclusive, that's fine, I accept.
I'm wondering if this should have, because we've incorporated into this, this isn't just athletics anymore, right? This is...
It's got some, it's, it's broader, it's...
It's broader, it also includes clubs and things after school as well, correct?
It does.
So do we want the title to include any of that? Because it's not just the athletic director, although, I mean, the, I guess if you put in there that if you're the athletic director, you're in charge of those clubs as well.
Athletic description. After-school activities director.
I like that.
So athletic and activities director is a term of it?
After-school activity.
With no hyphen.
Activities director.
Get beat up on my grammar. No hyphen, right, okay.
No hyphen.
After-school slash athletic director.
Athletic and after-school activities.
Activities slash athletic director, does that sound right?
You want both or just one, because I'm hearing two different things.
I think both.
Some people are saying after-school activities director.
No, athletic and after-school activities director.
What page, what line do you want?
We're making, we're making a title.
We're making something up.
Oh, the title, oh, all right, okay, all right, how about down here on the supervisors, is that different too?
Yeah. No.
Okay, got it.
Who, now who's in charge of, like, all of the after-school clubs right now?
The individual advisors. But what might happen is, we talked this over last month, is, you know, Patty does Lego Robotics with Chad, and they take care of everything, but maybe some of the ordering and some of the follow-through to get the program up and running will now fall on a quasi-administrator to do that.
Or transportation.
Yeah, and the transportation for events can work through the persons doing the job. And right now, if Otissey, the mine, wants to go somewhere, they work directly with me, which is fine, but this position, given the stipend that's included with it, can absorb that and line up those pieces for those advisors, and do the advisor evaluation as well, you know, the one-page, how'd you do this year? Yeah.
It says that the performance of this position will be evaluated annually by the principal. How is it going to be evaluated? It's like, is there an evaluation sheet?
There's a...
Or is that like the same thing as teachers?
No, actually, administrators, it'd probably be a hybrid of some of the things than teaching, but it probably look way more like an administrator's evaluation, most likely.
Actually, it would be, it would be made up of how well these...
The job duties, right.
The job duties were performed for each of these areas.
Right.
So you list those areas, and maybe it's one through 10.
Yeah.
Okay, so with those changes, which I made, okay, and I think Jen got them too.
Athletic and after-school activities director.
I have athletic and after-school activities director, is that correct? Okay.
Two words, two words.
After space school.
No thing in between, what is that thing?
Hyphen, hyphen.
The thingy. We have some teachers here, how would you do it, with a hyphen or without?
Without.
Without.
It's probably just a typo.
I, I would have put the...
You would have?
Really? Why?
Because that's actually grammatically correct.
Is it?
It actually is.
Really?
You notice I didn't say anything, and I wrote it.
You had both in there, you were covering all bases.
That was clever.
He wrote it. I would say because, right, grammatically being correct would be...
Put them back in.
The club, after-school club, is it after club or school club? It's after-school club.
I didn't want it to...
Oh, no, we wanted, we wanted to look, no, they should have... We wanted to look right, so the teacher should say... They have the retired. Title one, tell us.
Just a heads up, this is a classic situation, where the school committee's going to talk for three hours about a hyphen. Just saying, I wouldn't have spent my evening doing that.
They, they are in agreement, so I think we should put it back.
Yeah, if the proper... Rachel, you should have spoken up earlier.
Yeah, you're putting a hyphen back in.
She did not want to...
Trying to go out gently.
Hey, put it in your graduation speech, put a lot of hyphens in there.
We don't want...
It'd be like an Easter egg.
We don't, we don't, we don't want the new principal coming in and saying, they don't know how to do after-school properly?
After-school activities, such.
It was mostly when it became the heading that I went, that's not going to work.
But it looks funny with the hyphen in between there.
It does, it looks funny. It's grammatically correct.
Our agreement, two, two, this is like literally their job, so I'm going to...
We have two, we're okay with master's degrees, that's why it goes in there, so we'll put the hyphen in there, okay?
Look up on Google.
If you...
I looked up, I couldn't find.
If you control F and type in after, it'll find every place that says after, and then you can put the hyphen in.
He's almost done anyways.
He'll do it, and he'll pull it in a couple of spots, it's not.
Got it.
You mean we're going to have to do this again?
I hope not.
No.
Well, so we're going to say that we're going to accept this, we're going to adopt this...
What is it?
Position title.
Job description.
As amended.
Oh, yeah, that's, you could get out of it by saying that.
As amended, as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Amended for what?
Any, any further discussion?
Well, I was looking at the apostrophe, but I'm not going there. Well, I think it's correct.
Where?
Yes, it's correct.
Oh, that's correct.
Main Principal Association.
It's their policies, it's correct.
It belongs to them, so yes.
But we're good.
Yes, it's right, because it's more than one.
Jen's going to pass out.
All in favor of the motion? Five and O.
I didn't get who seconded.
That was me.
Yeah, that's right, associations, policies. Did you put a...
Yeah, we're good.
Thing in the policy.
All right, then I will look for, unless anybody has anything else to bring up tonight? I will look for a motion to go into...
Do we have to?
So is this going to be, all, you're going to all redo this again?
It's been done.
No, 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 we're good.
Just cross out what we ever did, right?
We just adopted it, if we fix it, then we adopt it.
Yeah, we're good.
That's it, forget that.